I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Should've said this before we started, do remain standing so we can have a moment of silence for the the three officers who who lost their lives. Thank you. Alrighty, first order of business, we have the minutes of September second. We move to approve the minutes of September second. All those in favor.
I'll second it.
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. Thank you, Win. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, ayes have it. Alrighty, public comments, Ronnie.
If you will take the booklet as well as the programming, thank you. Yes, I represent Black Hills Memorial Library. We appreciate your ongoing support every year. You're small, but you're mighty. You have a lot of people and you will see on the third page of the booklet, there's information of the number of people who use the library, broken down by adults, children, books, et cetera, et cetera. We are a busy library. We are very happy to be able to be supported by the communities that we serve, and we certainly have lots of things going on. I know this year is a hard year financially with budget issues, but we also have budget issues and in order to keep programming and doing what we do for the community, we are all for the community and doing as much as we can. So, we would like you to consider continuing to support us as the same amount as you have been supporting us in years past. Does anyone have any questions? Oh. Yes, I appreciate it, thank you, I appreciate it.
Do you have anything new and upcoming?
If you look at the program for the month of October, you'll see lots of things going on. We have things for children, we have things for adults. We're having a plant exchange, bring in a potted plant, go home with a potted plant. There's a book club every month, there are a group of adults that play bridge every Tuesday. There's a knitting group, there are puzzles available. You can bring in a puzzle or we provide the puzzle and people will work on it throughout until it's finished. We've had a tea time. We'll have a Christmas celebration with children and we're there all the, not all the time.
What are you doing for the teen blue dash?
The teens. I can't tell you that's, I can't tell you specific things on some of the programs. I'm sure they're having something near for teens. You know, and we appreciate the volunteers in the summertime. Kids who do come in and volunteer and that's really good for the community engagement. In June, we had a car show, which is very popular, this is our third year doing it, and it's great, it's fun to see all the old cars. Anything else? Okay, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
And can you mark the blue list?
I am going to leave.
So anybody who's interested, please tape it.
Okay. Hopefully everyone has signed in so that Ronnie has the correct spelling for the minutes.
Hi, I'll be brief, Todd Tyson, thirty-three Henover Street. A couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to talk to Tony Dougson, the director of real estate at Fordstown Bank. He was also the maintenance director at People's Bank before the merger. And I'd asked him if when the borough took possession of the bank building, did he get a particular file that was in the vault that I knew existed that had the old deeds and some old transfer documentation in it? And he said he didn't know it existed, so I told him right where it was located and he called me and said I can come and get it, so I have it, so may I approach?
You may.
There's three documents here that would've been one for each of the three parcels. So, the one has the old deeds that date back into the eighteen hundreds for the transfer of the original bank. That's it.
Very much.
Thank you.
I just have three questions. I was wondering about the pedestrian grant that I sent you an email about today. All it says in the last minutes that I have is that it doesn't seem to be a good fit currently for the cost. I was just wondering what you meant by that.
Oh, I don't, I think, I think it was the amount of money that was required to go after that, I think. We've done a study of, what?
It was fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, but I believe like we've done a study on that grant that you almost need over seven hundred fifty thousand dollar request to actually make it worthwhile. I believe it's the scale of the grant that was the issue.
I was also wondering about what's happening with Roger Miller's property and my Cursus property, if they're ever going to get cleaned up and what are we doing about it? And I was also concerned about the bank building. There's so little information that's given on that and it's just causing a lot of rumors around the community. So, I think that needs to be front forward, move forward with that so people know what's going on.
Well, I know with the Miller property, we're continually, Jeff is continually talking to him, citing him, sending him letters, but as I'm sure you're aware, with being here for a while, coming to the meetings, that the wheels of justice or of government run extremely slowly.
That property's been in bad condition for twenty years.
I understand.
What's the next excuse? There should be no excuses at this point.
There's only certain things that we can cite him for. And that's what we're doing. I mean, if a wall's going to cave in, we can't cite him saying the wall is ready to fall down. Do you follow what I'm saying on that? So that, that.
Excuses. It's more excuses.
I'll have a talk with him again.
I mean, there's a canopy across the alley.
He only ever just trims it enough to get by. He's, he's got, he's got to do a prime job with it.
I mean, it's time to hire somebody, go down there and clean it up and send them the bill.
If you're talking about the alley, that's, it needs to be beyond the bare minimum.
Absolutely.
So, so he has a chance to grow back or you have to, because you see, when we send him something and he fixes it and then it grows back, we're back at the very beginning with it again. It's not that the first time he takes care of it and then the next time it's bad, we can cite him for it. We have to go back to the very beginning and like we're starting all over again. Because that's the way the Harrisburg tells us we have to do it. So, that's why it goes so slowly with that.
And then my Cursus, is that the same reason that it doesn't get cleaned up?
I actually sent my Cursus letter, but I never heard back and I haven't followed up, but I will.
Because that's not, that's not just overgrowth, that's abandoned cars. Buildings with, we've heard that there's animals in and out of there. Rats and opossums and who knows what else, so. And that again has been for years.
He does, he does mow occasionally. I mean, he waits till it gets pretty high, but he does mow.
He always mows right before council.
And as far as the bank building is concerned, we'll be talking about that today during Solicitor's and we have a report. And we're planning to have a meeting to invite the public there, talk about what's, how much it would cost to get that ready for use and how much it would cost to repair this building to keep it in use. So, that will be all part of that. Okay, another person.
My name's Jason Knowles, I live on fifty Berlin Street. This is going to be more directed to Anthony tonight. Just got a few questions regarding the J. Myers and the purchase easement agreement with the residents at fifty-two Berlin Street who sold part of their property to J. Myers to allow sewer access. My first question is, what is the normal standard, engineer standard for sewer easement when it comes to dimensions?
We usually operate under twenty foot width.
Okay, what, what about length? So is it like ten by ten on each side? Okay.
Lights dependent.
And is that like usually a line, like center line?
It could be.
Okay. So, my question is, why I'm bringing this up, is when Myers came to us, I denied them access to my land and they wanted twenty feet of my land, twenty feet of the neighbor's land in order to have enough square footage to do the sewer easement and they needed an extra, I think, forty feet during construction, which is a total of sixty feet. By me saying no to them, they shifted their whole plan, I guess, and re-engineered their way of what they're going to do because I did not give them the access, but my neighbors did. So, based off of, everything's public information too, if anyone wants to look at it. Based off of the deed of fifty-two Berlin Street and the current right-of-way that was agreed in October of two thousand six for the sewer authority to use that as a right-of-way. The original owners of my house must've sold some land to you and the neighbors next to me sold some land to the sewer authority. And that was done by C.S. Davidson, this print right here, which he worked for. And you're correct, it says on this right-of-way right now for the sewer, ten by ten, like you were stating, by twenty. But when you look at the agreement that J. Myers and the residents at fifty-two Berlin Street agreed on, I just got to find it. They are saying that they need sixty feet, J. Myers needs sixty feet to do the sewer easement. And fifty-two Berlin Street is only forty-two feet wide. So where is J. Myers going to come up with that extra eighteen feet? If I told them no on my side of the land?
I don't know, I haven't seen the easement or the plans.
Plans are all public information, right here.
They haven't submitted, that's what I'm trying to say, if they haven't submitted plans, I haven't reviewed them to know. As far as.
Here's a map of their plans.
They can't take more than what's available to provide.
But, what I'm saying though is they, they're, the Myers agreement right now is saying that they need sixty feet. And that, they signed that with the people, with the residents of fifty-two Berlin Street and they paid them, they fifteen thousand dollars for that land. But they don't have the sixty feet because the deed of fifty-two Berlin Street is only forty-two feet. So how did, I'm asking you, how did an engineer from Myers and a lawyer, I guess, make a deal with fifty-two Berlin Street if they don't have enough square footage to actually even do the easement?
The easement could go into a different property. They could only be paying for forty-some feet of that.
But based off their plans right now, that is like I said, that is public and the maps they have for the easement doesn't show that.
They're going to force it like they did in two thousand six. The borough came in and told them, whoever lived there, make it happen or we will force it. Because I lived at fifty-two Berlin Street at that point in time. So, J. Myers signed a contract with fifty-two Berlin Street, they're going to come in and force it.
So that's my next question, if J. Myers comes in to you guys as a borough council and says, or comes to the sewer authority and says, hey, we didn't do the math right and we need sixty feet, but this property is only forty-two feet, are you guys going to give them right-of-way to come on my land?
Did you guys sign a deal that they put?
Because I already told J. Myers no multiple times.
I don't know that we have any authority there at all because it's, it's all the sewer authority.
But that's my question, if J. Myers comes to the sewer authority and requests them.
We have nothing to do with that, it's the sewer authority. So, you know, you need to talk with J. Myers to find out, talk with the sewer authority to find out. You know, and, you know, the engineer that's working with the sewer authority. Okay? So, I'm not sure when the next sewer authority meeting is, November isn't it? It'll be the first Wednesday in November that you would need to come and address those concerns with the sewer authority.
And then my last question is, stating on the agreement that J. Myers has made with the individuals at fifty-two Berlin Street, my neighbors, in their terms and conditions, it states that J. Myers will take down the fence during construction. That's on my property technically and put it back up for the individuals that live there. Now, someone going to be down there to make sure that they put the fence back onto the fifty-two Berlin Street property?
And again, you'll have to talk to the sewer authority.
But what I'm, but my town, my borough and Mr. Coons is the code enforcement. I brought up to you numerous times that the fence is on my property and on my property line and you, three minutes ago, you told me, well, J. Myers is going to be taking it down anyway. We'll just make sure that they will put it off your property and property line when they put it back up. So I'm just asking.
I don't know where you got that, but I never said that.
He didn't say you said it, he, it was, I think.
No, what I said was, before, since you weren't living there, that maybe the people living there had some agreement with the sewer authority that when they put, whenever they did what they did, then they could put it back since the, it goes underneath that fence, right?
Yeah, no, but my question is.
That's, that's what I said, I said the idea is that maybe there was an agreement and I don't know where you would have that information, whether that was passed on to you, but you came here and I never went and looked to see if there was any kind of registrations or anything because you came that night and sort of exploded and then left.
No, I said.
Can I ask a question? Why is the borough involved in where the fence is and our property?
Because the fence is, was incorrectly put up.
So there was no, I'm sorry.
There was no permit, I believe, for the fence to even go up.
There was no permit obtained for the fence. Now, I'm not saying that was our neighbors who put up the fence, it might've been done prior to that.
But the fence was played.
There was no permit and then it's partially on our property line.
Because I had my whole house surveyed and based off my survey, the fence is on my property and property line.
But so it's, oh, currently where it exists right now, it's currently over a current right-of-way for where the manhole is and the current existing sewer easement. According to that right-of-way, it's saying that a fence can't be on top of an existing easement. That's why that was brought up. The response, I think, that we got back was that, well, J. Myers is just going to take it down anyway, so we're just not going to enforce it pretty much, I'm not, I'm paraphrasing, obviously.
No, I don't think anybody ever said that.
That's why I said I was paraphrasing.
And then our lawyer, our lawyer told us to come to the borough, to the meeting, talk to the code enforcer and ask them to go out and look at the fence, make sure it's up to code and if not, then my lawyer will be in contact with you guys and request it. You will get a written request from my lawyer requesting you to go enforce the fence if it's against codes. So I'm giving you the option to do it yourself or my lawyer won't reach out to you.
If it's, if it's a matter of whose property it's on, that's not a code violation, that's a.
Well, the fence is out of code, I can tell you that, because.
That's, that's a different story, I mean, if there's, if there's ordinance violations, but the borough can't make sure that everybody's fence is on the correct property.
Well, that's why I paid a survey, two thousand dollars to survey my property and now I have documentation that shows the fence is on my property. So my lawyer told us.
Your lawyer should contact the property and.
Well, we will, but I was all, I also explained to my lawyer that the fence is breaking ordinance's rules. So my lawyer asked me to come to my borough meeting, let my borough code enforcement officer know that the fence is breaking an ordinance and have them go down and look at it and see if it can be.
And what ordinance is it violating?
Well, there's no, it's not supposed to be a fence on any easement. And there's a fence on a carnival roadway easement.
It also says it's not supposed to be so many feet within a property line, if I'm not mistaken.
And the fence is not supposed to be directly on the property line. Which, the whole fence is directly on the property line and all, since they put all the posts on the exterior of the fence, not the interior, every single post is on my property with the chain link on the line. So every single post is on my property. So that's.
In a perfect world, the easiest way to solve this would be if J. Myers takes it down, when they put it back up, they make sure that it's so many feet within from the property line up to code and not, you know, over the property line.
Have you spoken to anyone at J. Myers?
I have not spoken to them after I, we had a disagreement when I told them they don't have access to my property. I haven't talked to them since and that's been about a year. But my five minutes are up, so I want to go anywhere.
So it basically sounds like he needs to really be talking with J. Myers and his lawyer needs to be talking to J. Myers.
I mean, I, what I would do is, is try to make, have some sort of communication with J. Myers and then figure out when they're going to do the work so you can be there.
Well, I lived there, I'll be there.
Yeah. Well, I didn't know if like work's good.
No, I get that, no, I'll be there.
But that would be my, I think that'd be the most cost-effective way to handle it.
So, real quick, going back to that.
You are, you live where?
I'm Joshua Kessel, I live at twenty-three Bernard Road. I can tell you the story of that fence, I can tell you how it got put up and everything else. The best way and the easiest way and the cost-effective way would be to have him there when J. Myers takes it down and tell him when it goes back up, it has to meet regulations right here. Don't get lawyers involved. That's the problem with these guys, you guys have the opportunity and the power to go down and talk to them. Why not communicate with them? I don't understand all this stuff of getting lawyers involved. If there is rules, regulations and ordinances from this stuff, get it done just by going down and communicating to them. Don't get lawyers involved, that drags it out and pisses people off, or my image, makes people mad. And then you got neighbors that are angry at each other and everything else. Just go down and talk to them. That's the easiest thing.
Thank you.
Now, I have a question as in, did you guys allow J. Myers to build eighty homes back there?
No plan, no plans from somebody.
They're submitting.
So, I just have a comment about that there.
Submitting.
The right-of-way has, it's public information, so that was submitted to the sewer authority, so the sewer authority should have it, so people on the council should at least have access to it.
Okay, so you're saying it wasn't made compared.
There's no, there's been no plan for development submitted, there's been a sketch plan, a plan that was submitted a long time ago. No plan has been submitted to the borough.
So what is your guys' understanding and ideas that say when they submit them, are you going to allow?
Well, as with any other subdivision, review it against the ordinance.
And right now, we were trying to change some zoning in the area and that was not allowed to happen and so the current zoning was there. We can't stop them from doing it in divisions. The thing is, the only thing we will do is whenever they submit official plans, we will look at those things and make sure that there are buffers and different things like that around so that they, they do things that will hopefully make it easier on our residents.
Where is the right-of-way that everybody's talking about that they're trying to get? To get into the property, like a roadway that enters it?
It's behind fifty Berlin Street and fifty-two Berlin Street between us and Grohmark. There's a right-of-way behind there that leads to the field that they have access to.
And that's.
And then they're trying to get the sewer access between my house and fifty-two Berlin Street. But I told them no.
So did they repurchase land from Grohmark?
I'll just show you the map, this is public information.
Okay, so here's the deal. I went and bid, or basically was a nuisance to J. Myers the day that that land went up for sale. I was told that that right-of-way was taken away because when he did rezoning for the original owner, maybe not the original owner, but the owner of Grohmark back in the early two thousands, he petitioned to have that put as industrial and get the original right-of-way from back in the seventeen hundreds taken away. And that's what I was told. And I did not have a right-of-way to the property from Crafts Mill Road. So now my question goes to.
That's not what he's talking about, he's talking about a right-of-way for the sewer.
No, I'm talking about they have a.
The actual right-of-way or the actual access to the property on the preliminary plans is to come out on the Berlin.
Where? Because again, when I lived down there, Bigfoot, Pennsylvania, or PennDOT came through and the house that they live in was the last house that was grandfathered into when they needed a driveway to be able to turn either way. If they put anything up above it, all traffic had to turn going right and then go down around the square and come back because of it being a hazard.
I have no idea. PennDOT did.
That would be between the developer and PennDOT.
That's right.
That, that wouldn't be anything we would regulate because it's a Penn, it's a PennDOT road. They would have to go through HOP process with PennDOT.
Do you guys have the power to mix that whole project to begin with?
All we can do is enforce the regulations that exist. The zoning in the ordinance, that's, if it was anybody coming in, regardless of what the subdivision was, development, we have the power to enforce the zoning in the ordinance that's on the books.
Even if somebody just owned the entire property and wanted to put one house on it, we would still have to go through the same process.
So do you guys have the access to zone that only agricultural?
That was what they were just saying, that they looked at it, it's already been zoned, they've already come and had the conversations. We cannot rezone it since they've already shown interest in it.
So I have a question and I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, do you mind?
No, you're fine, please, because I think we're all on the same side.
About the rezoning.
And you're, you are?
I'm Margaret Knowles, fifty Berlin Street. So when was that land rezoned? Because it used to be agricultural, correct?
So it was industrial.
It was always, it was always a dual.
Of industrial that we had in Jefferson.
Okay, because Grohmark is so much else true.
That's why they tried to change the land below it to industrial.
Okay, okay, so when was that rezoned?
I do not, that was, it was part of me, so I don't know.
Okay, no, that's not, sorry.
One day it was really two thousand.
That is fine, I, I don't know.
Okay, I mean, the borough should have records of that, correct? So if we filed a right, right to know.
Twenty-one or twenty-two.
Okay, and like public postings were posted on the land and, and you have record of that?
Yeah.
Okay, so file a formal right to know to find all that information. Because it, I mean, you should have record of it.
The prior.
You should have receipts of, yeah. Right, but the borough should have record of it and so when I file a right to know, all that record should be there, including the receipts for it and everything like that. Receipts for the public posting, receipt for the newsletter that would've went out to residents, et cetera, letting them know about the rezoning. Well, that's, that's the proper protocol for it according to the municipalities planning code. Right, but the municipalities planning code requires that, so the borough. Right, but the municipalities' planning code requires that, so the borough should've done all that.
Yeah, and they did.
And the right-to-know will give me that information, that's all I'm asking. Is that correct?
The zoning officer did that, yeah.
Alright, so I'll, I'll file a right-to-know, we'll get the information. And I need to take your time, so you can go ahead.
Someone else?
Uh, Mark Miller, I live at forty-seven Berlin Street. And, uh, I was here the night that you changed that property from industrial to residential, so that John H. Myers could put his development in there. And it was done when only my wife and here, my wife and I were here at the meeting the night it was done. We didn't get no letter saying that that's, was, was gonna happen, but it happened, okay? My other questions are, as we move forward with this project, are we gonna get notification as to what is going on, what is being approved? Are we thinking of gas lines for the town that may have to be updated to supply another eighty homes? Are we thinking of a water supply that may not be adequate to supply the whole town? Are we thinking of these things, or are we just need more sewer hookups to pay for something that we should've got some grants for?
That's all things that Myers would have to deal with. I know, uh, whenever the people down below, Ball Field, started their construction, they had to deal with water, sewer, electric, and natural gas. They dealt with all, all of those, uh...
Correct, this is actually in the borough, correct?
Yeah.
And use our...
That's what they have to do, yeah.
Well, is there an emporium that we can put on each unit being built that would take care of future problems for the town? Or is that like on heard of?
I'm not sure what an emporium is.
Um, like, each unit would have to pay like a hundred thousand dollars upfront prior to it even being built for future problems that the town is going to have. Because what happens is, developers come into towns, they make their millions of dollars and they say, see ya. And then up the road, what happens is, all the updated cost is put on all the residents of the entire town. Do you understand what I'm saying? So is there any kind of a emporium that can be put on each unit prior to it being built?
There, there's nothing that I'm aware of.
Nothing like that exists?
I don't know if you can do this legally, but...
No, because if you, if you just create a fee for something, it's an unauthorized tax, is how the statute defines it, so the borough is limited, they can only do so much.
Okay, are we gonna get notifications as to what is happening with this project, or...
I think that the, you, if the agenda's posted on the website each month, check the website and check the agenda, because I don't think there's a mailing of notice requirement for like a, like a subdivision plan. Zoning there, there is, but...
At, at this point, we are what? The land has just been converted from industrial to residential at this point?
I believe so, yes.
Nothing else has been...
Residential outlining.
Residential outlining, it was the zone, um, but ended zone by J. Myers, that's his, to the, to the extent the borough knows that's it.
So we wouldn't get a letter saying that we're having a meeting to...
I would check the agendas to...
So we just need to go online and check, see what's happening?
And they'll probably have to contact the sewer authority, so check the agendas on the sewer authority as well.
Right.
Linda Miller, forty-seven Berlin Street. I think you can tell the confidence level of, of the residents is kinda low as far as information having been given. You did get a letter a couple of years ago, you were letting the borough, they were calling with people. Nobody really thought it was a good idea to proceed with this project. Now we get a lot of, I don't know, or it's really up to them, or it's somebody else. Um, I don't know if, if you really don't have any power, or you're just maybe not wanting, or want to do sort of like you've done before, without anybody here hardly making some of your decisions. But we would ask that you, if you do have power, to say how many homes are gonna go over there. Keep in mind that the, uh, the taxing of the infrastructure of the community. We were told that as far as the fire company, the number of stories has to be limited because they don't have ladders. Uh, we all deal with pressure that's sometimes great with the water, sometimes not so great, while we're adding who knows how many other people trying to shower or use water to that. Uh, so, I mean, if there's power you have to limit, I think it's pretty clear from everyone who attended that meeting, and probably most people here today, that are maybe outside the council, that, uh, eighty homes on that small piece of land is gonna be overkill. And we're going to have great hazards with people flying over the hill. We live just across from that field. We have trouble with people leaving our driveway and warn them, be careful, you're gonna get smashed, uh, because of the way people fly over the hill. I have a feeling we're going to create great hazards, uh, and we're going to really tax the infrastructure. And as my husband pointed out, it's really not fair for the residents to bear the cost of all of these up, uh, grading of everything that would be required. And, uh, then the developer makes their money and moves on, so we have a little quaint, lovely community that's very important to a lot of people. I hope that we can find a way to let Myers do some developing, but also retain some of what, uh, means a lot to the people who live here.
Thank you.
So, along with all this again, I grew up in this town, I don't know how many of you guys did. The other thing is with this, uh, I have kids that like to go out riding, you know, their bicycles, run around town and whatnot. I will say within the last five years, I don't necessarily feel the most hundred percent safe with doing that, one, because of traffic. You add eighty more homes. I'm a police officer in Herbert Borough, my wife is a police officer in York City. So here's the thing, the more people you start putting into an area, the more problems you're going to have. I don't care where it's at, or the people you're putting in there. The more people, the more problems. Nice, small, knit community. Since I was young, and I'm forty-three years old right now, I was born and raised in this town, okay? Thing about it is, you start adding more people, you start losing that. And I even ask, how many people moved in here thinking, oh, man, I wanna live in Jefferson, because we could make it a big city? Everybody's, I wanna move into Jefferson because I'm away from people. No offense, I like my neighbors and everything else, but I don't wanna talk to my neighbors every day. I don't wanna see my neighbors every day, I just wanna be out and away from people, okay? And if I see you, I talk to you and I like you, you know what I mean? The more you start cramming people in, the more you're gonna hate people. That's where more problems start. Now, along with that, there is communities out there, and when I say communities, townships, boroughs, everything else, that is putting ordinances in, that is stopping all big developments. I think Huddleburg is talking about one right now. Maybe you go to have a meeting with their borough and figure out what they're doing, or township, or whatever it is. And we put that ordinance in, stop them right now. Because I can tell you, I've been in some of J. Myers' homes, I've been in some of D. H. Horton's homes. They're crap. And like they said, taxes, I sat here the night that Myers and his, uh, lawyer were here. They said our taxes will go down. They lied their asses off to us. You guys knew it and you sat there and didn't say a word. I don't know who was on board at the time, but whoever was there allowed them to lie. It never goes down. So what I'm saying is, maybe you guys need to look into an ordinance stopping all big developments like that. This town doesn't need more money, we don't need more people. We're not a town of a big business. And I hate to say it, but if you want that, move to a bigger area. I know why everybody moved out here. Stay away from that. They don't want that. They don't want the traffic, they don't want the people. I said my piece.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, Carolyn Buck, I'm visiting from Cadoras Township. And actually, mine is here in regards to the data center ordinance. So do I say that earlier then, or do I talk now?
What data center ordinance?
Well, it's on the agenda, and that's what brought me here.
Oh, all we're doing is, we're talking about it, looking at possibly having a... So when we get down to the data center ordinance, you'll, you'll hear what we're talking about.
We follow the firm, forty-five Berlin Street. Just go along with what they got to say.
Yeah, we don't want the houses, we're not happy.
Especially townhouses, we don't need townhouses.
We, we could see ten or twelve houses over there, nice houses, but, you know, to walk out and see them.
That's crazy.
A bunch of townhouses.
Too many people.
As the Myers lawyer said, uh, he was sure doctors and lawyers who wanted to live over there.
Yeah.
So I believe if there were ten or twelve homes, then maybe we would attract some, for some reason.
You can thank Cadoras Township for that out there and this over here, and they're the ones why we had to put the sewer in. But I was against J. Myers and rezoning. I don't know if any of you were at the meeting, but I was... I was a lone cowboy, all I, that's all I can say.
I was against it, though.
I'm just visiting.
I'm board of Cadoras Township down in Shrewsbury Township, too. I'm Ali Albrecht, don't tell me.
Okay, I'm just visiting. My husband actually helped the township, your borough, out and fixed one of your homes over there, okay? So I'm just here about the data center. I can't fix...
And the water comes to another problem, because when they had that fire out there, it looked these were mountains, and they were pumping water there at the end of Burner Road, I had no water back in my property.
I don't understand why the water company allowed them to build down below the Ball Field, because when, before that was even supposed to start, the developer was supposed to increase the water supply up here.
Yeah, so wait a minute, they didn't do that? No. So that was always my understanding, they had to do that as well?
Mine as well.
So now...
So why didn't York Water allow them to do it? I don't know, you'd have to contact York Water.
Listen, I'm sorry, I'm not staying up, but they, just go back to this, here, I'm just... It's very frustrating me, because I hate dealing with large masses like that. I understand that that's my job and everything else, but we see the, the problems that are already starting, and I think ordinance to stop all that, so we don't have to worry about York Water saying, oh, we're just gonna passify this time, or these other places saying, oh, we're just gonna allow it this time, or we can do it this time, or J. Myers paying them off like they have all these other places. If you have the power, do it, stop it, before it ever even gets started and passing the book to the next one.
But you have to understand, if we would pass an ordinance that said that right now, J. Myers has already grandfathered in. And so you couldn't stop them.
Uh, I think if you get enough people to sign up, I think you could do it.
What's the law say?
I think you can get enough, uh...
What's the law say?
What do you call it, uh?
Signatures?
Yeah, there you go.
Petition.
Petition.
And I have a comment, too. What we hear from you guys is what we can't do, we can't do, we can't do. Maybe what we need to do is figure out what we can do.
There you go.
We're trying to do everything we can.
I'd like to hear more of that, or everything.
And we will do what we can do once Myers submits a plan.
Okay, yeah, we understand that, but it's just what we hear.
So that's what, we're waiting for J. Myers to submit documentation, a plan, and then we will look at the plan and say, this needs change, this needs change.
And this is what the borough wants. We want this, and we want this, and we want this. If you wanna do this, then you've gotta do this.
There are certain things that we will not be allowed to dictate them to change.
Well, see, there are...
But there are certain things that we will. Uh, we, we've already told them about, we don't have a ladder truck, so that they have to have a certain thing there for the fire company, they have to have a certain width on their roads.
And police, we need police. So that should be on the table for them as well.
Well, it wouldn't be there on the table for them, it would be on the table for us. And when we look into police for ten hours a week...
Well, yeah, we already discussed, I know, I, I remember discussing that.
Yeah.
Um, but see, again, it's like...
Your property taxes would have to go up at least a half a mil.
We, but, uh, we talk about this all the time, it's like, we want to hear what can be done, instead of, we can't do this, we gotta do this, we can't do that.
And we've said that we, we can do something once they submit their plan.
Right, once the plan is in, so...
Right, so we can't worry about it now.
No, no, we're not worrying about it, we just want to know the details.
And we can't do anything now, but we will be able to do something once they submit plan.
Okay, and then we need to be informed of everything.
And it will be on the agenda.
May I ask something?
Are you sure?
I'm sorry.
If it's not on the agenda, we're not supposed to talk about it here, we're not allowed to make any decisions. And that is what happened with the legislature in Harrisburg. They said that it has to be on the agenda, and it helps to, uh, keep the sunscreen on.
Oh, sure, sure.
In place. Can I ask a question? If there's been no approval for anything, what were they doing over there this past spring with the baco in the middle of the field?
They were doing a survey and a geological dig, soil test.
Yeah, perking.
And then if you notice, they had surveyors out there, too.
And then that's where the whole conversation that came up with the right-of-way, because then I talked to the individuals that manage Growmark and workers down there, and I asked, because they're against Myers, they're fighting against Myers as well on their end as a business. Um, but then I asked, why are you allowing them access through your property to get into the field? Because they're allowing the geological surveyors and the J., um, this Shaw surveying crew and J. Myers to drive their vehicles. And then that's when they told me that between the last house on Berlin Street by Crafts Mill and Growmark, there's a right-of-way in there that gives access to the owner of that field. And that's why they're allowed to go through there.
I wanna talk to you, please.
So they haven't submitted any sketch plans or...
They have submitted a sketch plan.
Oh, a sketch plan was, and from what I understand, all perk tests and everything have to be done before they even get funding. And that's, is that correct? So there, if the perk test comes back, then they need into funding.
For stormwater, yeah, they would need perk testing, come through, um, but we've not, we haven't seen any preliminary plans, et cetera. But it should only be a sketch.
But they did put a sketch plan in, which sealed their deal for grandfathering.
Yeah, and I would, as we were discussing, there's, there's a timeframe for the grandfathering, um, but more than likely, if there was any discussions of changing the zoning...
So they haven't submitted plans, so from this, does the ordinance say, and, um, if I'm speaking out loud, does the ordinance say from the time a sketch plan has been submitted, you have X amount of time to get your plans in, or your sketch plan and everything is void, and we start over?
Correct, and that, that...
We don't look into.
We don't have the exact number.
But that could be the key to all of this.
It could be, I would say, more than likely, though, as soon as we would talk about changing the zoning, we would have a plan submitted the next day.
Well, the thing is, if that goes on the agenda, they have to work overnight to get it in here before. So if that's your loophole...
And they could almost just simply submit the sketch plan again as their plan.
But then you're really playing cat and mouse now, so if you have that ability to do that, your first thing, when was the sketch plan originally put in? Years ago when they bought it?
Charlie, do you have an idea? I was gonna get more information with the officers, why? Can you tag it up in the papers?
While you were searching for that, I just wanted to, so, one of the ordinances, uh, under preparation of plans for the sketch plan. Um, it says a sketch plan will be considered as submitted for informal review and discussion, and shall not constitute formal filing of a plan with the borough, understood? As far as may be practical on the basis of the sketch plan review and discussion, the borough will informally advise the developer as promptly as possible of the extent to which the proposed land development conforms to both the borough's subdivision and land development and zoning ordinances. So you have the ability to informally advise them based on that sketch plan as it stands right now, without needing the final plans.
And we have.
That, that meeting has, has previously happened.
Okay, so how, so, we've seen the sketch plans because they've shown it to us. So they're proposing two-story townhomes. How does that fit with the zoning ordinances? Is it multifamily dwelling? Because they're attached. They're saying it's single... How does that fit with the zoning ordinances? Is it multifamily dwelling? Because they're attached. They're saying it's single family, but multifamily, the language is vague because it'll say something along the lines of, well, they're shared common spaces, so they're proposing parking lots among the two-story developments. So how is that being? Because as far as I could tell for the residential outline, I don't know if that fits current ordinances for multifamily dwelling in the zoning area, if that makes sense. Now, I don't know, we'll have to research it more, but I'm just saying.
It it, I think everything fits with the zoning right now.
Okay.
So they did the sketch plan and you advised them. Did you advise them, yeah, we like your plan? Did you consider the feedback that you?
Make sure they had buffers in there.
So their plans don't have the buffers right now, though.
I think they do.
They don't, because if you look at this, if you look at this, it does, it has no buffers.
Okay, well, then, once they. The sketch plan was really just for the building.
Now, that's more than a sketch plan because that's the formal option agreement.
The the conversation would have to be whether between the residential may outline, whether that's considered a zoning change, whether they enact the buffer. That was the conversation I had with, yeah. But we we don't know until they actually submit something as a formal preliminary plan. All we can say is, this is, this is what your needs and their zone are. You can form, this is what you can do to this extent.
So you've, you've talked about them needing buffers, but you didn't say, hey, are people feel like eighty homes is too many? You sort of gave the green light on the.
All we can say is, it's zone, this is the zone, this is your max density allowed. However, they they work around that, that's, that's what we can advise to. They have, they have so many acres, they're allowed to develop that to a max density based upon the ordinance.
And when they first started, they wanted a hundred and twenty units in there.
Which would have been impossible there.
So we were able to get them.
But we can talk to them about making sure there are proper turns in the road so that the fire trucks can come through.
And proper parking.
Talk to them about parking, how many cars they have, parking spaces they have to provide, or.
Okay, so let's, let's go to that because I had an argument with their lawyer about that too. So who's gonna oversee that when that becomes too full with parking? Is that the HOA?
They're gonna have an.
So an HOA, yes, like they have no rights of standings whatsoever. They're losing left and right on the court. So the understanding is, you go to that development down there, you go to the one that was just built, just walk through it one day. Okay, I don't know how many of you guys actually get out and walk. I'm probably the one you guys see walking crazy early in the morning with my wife. Go walk through there one time. It's hard to drive two vehicles down those roads at one time because they're so loaded with vehicles. They're gonna build this to the gills, and then they're gonna turn it over like, we've all stayed. Oh, it's your problem now. Let the HOA take care of it. Because they don't care, they got their money. I I'm trying to tell you guys, as a borough, as much as possible, anything that is in your power, die fighting for it, to telling them, get the hell out of here. Nobody wants that. I would even go as far as saying, I was going to bend against the old man before he died. I'll pay him what he paid for it, seventy-one thousand dollars. I'll pay him for that property. I'm not gonna pay him for everything else that he's already done to it, but I'll pay him seventy-one thousand dollars.
Alrighty, moving on. Solicitor. We talked about, uh, we have a a letter from York Water Company about the uh thing up themselves. On six or five Spruce Street.
Yeah.
Uh, and.
We received a response that set out Mr. Baum's options, um, provided the estimated cost, and then told, advised that they would reimburse him for the cost of his service lighting installation. So those are the options. Again, the borough doesn't really have any involvement in this, but he was copied on this letter, so. He has that, and at this point, it's his his obligation to reach out to them, to York Water, if he wants to go forward. So.
Thank you. Next, we have the snow club contract and.
So I took a look at that, and it has the provisions in that I was asking about for the insurance and the indemnification. So, um, I don't know how he's proposing, if he just wants to, if we wanna do an amendment, or if he just has a new contract with the updated years on it, would be fine. I don't need to be involved in it.
Yeah.
Um, as long as we have these same provisions.
We'll probably just do the same contract, update yours.
And just make sure he's, um, files the insurance.
Yeah, yep.
Um, okay, the last item is the, um, oh, wait, York County Planning Resolution. Is this my, is this my agenda from last one? Here, resolution to provide annual statement to members of Jefferson-Cadorus Joint Sewer Authority. Um, they had requested two hundred and fifty dollars a year to pay them for their service. That has to be approved by the governing, um, bodies that created the authority, so both, um, Jefferson and Cadorus.
Now, we approved already that they could do it. Do we have to approve, have a resolution to say how much?
Yes, so they, yeah, they went two hundred and fifty dollars each.
Per year.
Per year. And that would begin, I believe that would begin when their new term starts, like they can't increase it in the middle of a term.
Right, just like, like the official.
That's what it's coming from there.
Yes.
Their funds, not our funds.
Right.
Does Cadorus Township have to approve that, do they?
Yes.
And they did.
So we would need a motion for a resolution.
I'll make the motion. So we have resolutions on this one.
Second.
I'll second it.
Moving second, that we provide a resolution for a stipend to the members of the Jefferson Joint Cadorus Sewer Authority that they have a stipend of two hundred and fifty dollars per year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Do you need a copy of that resolution?
You can just email me a copy.
I'll have to send it to the.
You can send it to the sewer authority. I don't think the township needs a copy of it. But I would send it to the sewer.
Anybody else have anything for the solicitor? Engineer.
Yes, um, property surveys for the borough for four different properties. Estimated that would be around thirteen thousand dollars to complete all four surveys. I don't believe anything was usable from the previous work. Wasn't completely complete, boundary surveys were done. Playground update, uh, Ann and YSM myself met on nine seventy eighth office, discussed the park. YSM is moving forward with the design. Parking line, we discussed, um, what's our concept to be, as well as the feasibility studies for the, for the borough offices.
And we also have, we were donated that gazebo.
Yep, Dan brought all the information for that, and he was able to provide that to Ann from YSM, and she's incorporating that into her design. So, thank you to the Lions Club for that. Uh, Jessica Fieldhouse from our office met with members of the borough, as well as World Square, on both prop, on both properties on nine twenty-four. Uh, cost estimates for desire renovations will be available at the end of October. Like rolls into feasibility study, an updated feasibility study for the borough properties and offices will be completed once cost estimates are received, so expected early in November. Uh, met with Naces on nine twenty-nine, uh, discussed the concerns they have for the new world curb height with their parking and walking access to the alley. They're both, uh, both needing to get access now that they're getting a little older. Um, unfortunately, we didn't know that they were using off-road parking right there in this grassed area. And we had to change our design to put the roll curb in. They, um, had no issues with any stormwater. And they saw no issues of stormwater coming near the edge of that curb, which is good because it means the road's working. Uh, I included a, on the back of the engineer's report, um, a section that they would be interested in having us if we could possibly cut down that curb so they could have better access. Right now, there are cars unable to drive over the curving, and, um, the wife was unable to step across it comfortably. She's having some issues getting started walking, so they'd asked us if it's possible for us to cut about thirty feet of sections down to about an inch and a half reveal. So I told them, design wise, it doesn't look like it'd be an issue on our end, provided they're comfortable with, there's no stormwater effects to the property, and they said they were not. So I'd asked the borough to look into possibly having a contractor come out there and remove that section of roll curb for them to be able to access the property better.
And because that is, I'm sure it won't meet, meet the dollar amount, we could just contact.
Correct, yeah. And I would just make sure that wherever it's all cut, leave about an inch and a half of reveal. That way, if there is a little bit of rain, it keeps in the jar you've out, and then just seal over top of it with regular tar seal to preserve the stone.
So basically, it's just really cutting the, the top of the.
Just cut the top lip off, and they're gonna take care of putting some stone behind it on their end.
And we don't need to do anything on the front or?
I wouldn't worry about it too much. I'd probably cut any lip off, if you cut it flat, take the front lip off so it's not an angle.
Yeah, yeah.
But other than that, I wouldn't be concerned with it.
Now, are you, do you find somewhere to do the work?
I would have, which is how you're dealt with. You're under, you're underneath any threshold where you would need us involved.
Okay, then just leaving the five-year plan on there, just the.
Yeah, no, no updates on that, just the continuing.
Okay. Anybody have anything else for the engineer?
Can I just say one thing? So I just wanted to make it clear because I think some of the confusion, like when you're talking about, um, when you wanna have a town meeting for the bank and the, this building and stuff, they don't really say it, but the consulting contractors and feasibility study is all hinging on when we have the town meeting for that. So what they're not saying is, early November is when all that's due back, and then we would have a town meeting to discuss what happens with those buildings sometime after that. So I'm just putting that because it's like not really clear, but for like common folk to understand.
Thank you.
Your whole comment.
What we've been talking about in that light is the idea that possibly our meeting, our November board meeting, or council meeting, if we would start it at six o'clock and give everybody information about all the things and have the meeting there, and then after that, do the council meeting. So that we would give all the information. And possibly, what, what Ann and I have been talking about is the idea that maybe we could have papers there that then the people that attend those meetings could write down their thoughts and ideas and give them back to us. So that we would have something concrete to look at and.
Looking for a feedback survey.
A feedback survey, yeah.
But it does sound like, like November might be tight, though. Because he's saying they, they need, uh, saying in October to get the other thing in November, so it's honestly, you're probably looking at December.
We're projecting to have the cost estimates back. There's not a ton left to do on our feasibility study. The cost estimates for any needed changes really is the last piece that we need to pull together. So we've done a structural analysis of both buildings. We've done zoning feasibility reports of deuse for both buildings. The cost estimates for any needed upgrades above what is structurally needed is the last piece. We're on time, on timeframe to go with that.
We're on time for November?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, the, the contractor said that he would need, I think, three weeks.
Yeah, the contractor.
And we've already gone through one week, so two more weeks.
Yep.
So mid, mid, like second, end of the second or third week of, of October, we should get the information from the contractor.
And then if you get a feedback survey, what timeframe are you looking at to make a decision? Like, will there be another meeting that people can hear what you've gotten from that survey? So more comments can be made, or thoughts expressed?
Didn't think, really think that far ahead. I'm sure we'll address it here at the, at the, uh, at the council meeting.
Like, at the November meeting, you're not gonna make a, like, are you gonna make a decision that nobody, when nobody knows that you're going to make a decision? Will it be announced that a decision?
November is when we're gonna have the town meeting.
Yes.
So my.
We wouldn't be making the decision
That's what she said.
That's what I'm asking.
On that same day.
That's what I'm asking.
Are you really gonna take?
Come on, get, you know, make sense.
You're thinking of the feasibility. You're presenting feasibility, so it's what you're gonna do.
Yeah, we're, we're presenting the feasibility study of what possibly could be done with both properties. All three or all four properties. Okay, that's what the feasibility study is. We're presenting what could be done. We're gonna get feedback, and then from the feedback, we're gonna look at and then come back here to the council meeting, probably in December or January or February, and be making any kind of discussions and decisions.
That's the clarification that she's asking for.
That's all she's asking.
Yeah, we're not gonna do it on the same day.
Well, you've been asked to do that. That's why I wanted to make sure that it wasn't gonna happen because it's been done in the past where sufficient time hasn't been given.
And before Anthony leaves, I had a chance to talk to the Naces, and they very much appreciate you taking the time to meet with them. And they appreciate the council listening to their issue tonight, uh, to get that result. Because they're, they're older people, they've lived here for all but fifty years. They're getting, they're just scared now that they can't get in and out of their car. So I think this is a good opportunity, a good, uh, presentation to see where working together and communicating sure helped them out.
Thank you. Okie dokie, Jessica.
Okay, uh, first thing I think we should touch base on is our building code officials that we have in process presently. Connie and I, we got our heads together. We've had too many issues developed with these people. So we're looking at two different building code officials, Barry, Isaac, LLC, and Pennsylvan Municipal Code Alliance. The first one, Barry Isaac, I was pretty impressed with these people. But when we got the other people, the Municipal Code Alliance, they just blew it away. So I, I would like to recommend that we go ahead with this PA Municipal Code Alliance.
Is there a contract with the current code administrator?
So I tried to ask him that, and there.
So I tried to ask him that and there was, it was unknown.
I've seen some municipalities have one with, um, specifically and then others have known.
We haven't had anything that's been updated that I'm aware of since I got on council.
Just so there's no, like, notice provisions or time period that you have to get to notice of. It was changed when Rachel was here.
Right.
From MDIA to Commonwealth Codes. And I do not recall or have not found any contract. And I even called and asked and all he sent me was be costless, but there was no.
Now Jeff. Some municipalities have. Several enforcement officers. And you could, the, the, uh, people can choose. Would we be doing that or just only having the one?
Only having the one. These, these people were, we were impressed with these people, I mean, they're, they're right on board. I've, I've been getting permits that were late and dated five days before that, so it looks like I'm holding on to these permits. And they've been losing permits, I gotta keep asking, it's just one thing after another, so.
I mean, that current.
Our current one, yeah.
Can I ask who your current one is?
Commonwealth Codes.
Thank you, good.
I know other municipalities that are switching the same thing.
Okay. Jeff, do, do you know any municipalities that have this municipal code?
Uh, yes, matter of fact, uh, Fawn Group has it, Mount, Mount Wolf, Connie?
No, they have Barry Isaac.
Okay.
Uh, Mount Wolf, something like that?
Do you have Hanover?
Gettysburg, Chambersburg, Cumberland County. They're working their way through and they're picking up more York County municipalities.
These people were very professional.
Where, where are they from?
Uh, these are actually from Lancaster? I'm getting these two mixed up to be honest with you, but, but I was very impressed with PA Municipal Code Alliance.
Yeah, they have a guy in Hanover that would probably be assigned to us. As far, as far as inspections go, so. They were just a lot more. They were just, they just came off a lot better, way better than who we have now. And out of the two that we talked to, um. We felt pretty confident with what they, what these guys do.
Definitely. And their costs, we compared some of their costs against Commonwealth Codes, permit costs, and they were all well within reason.
And it's gonna be a lot smoother, um, because they do their things online and we're able to log in and see where they are on, in the process of their inspection. As opposed to us sending it off to.
Commonwealth.
Commonwealth and we have no clue where it's at, so they entered everything into a system and we can log in and we can see that it's under review. We can see when it's completed, we can see all the steps that it's in and no one else.
May I ask who you have?
How about the other one? Can we get information on that company? Could ours has Commonwealth?
Okay.
Um, I can tell you Commonwealth actually probably got me involved in a lawsuit with the township. Permits lost, nothing, yeah, it was a long drawn out. I understand exactly and if you, if I can't vote, it'll even. Watch out on between the two that you're looking at now, the two new ones. Does the other one do it online or?
Uh, they said, that was Barry Isaac, that was the company you preferred us to the other week. They were, they, they were good, they were professional, but they didn't, they didn't, they didn't wow me like the other people did.
I think they might be further away too, so if they, if this other one has one in Hanover, you're gonna have a closer person. Is my guess and Barry Isaac, I think they're based out of mechanics. Yeah, it was already.
Yeah, mechanic firms.
Do you know how many municipalities they already represent, like Commonwealth is like represented?
Well, that's like Barry. Barry Isaac, they have like two hundred and twenty people that work for them, but these other people, they even have more, I mean, they're all over the place. They're in Delaware, Maryland, they're everywhere.
Yeah, this, um, PMCA has Chambersburg, Bedford, Somerset, Adams County, they have offices everywhere, so they have a lot more. They're more spread out and they're looking to come into York.
So, do we need a motion to accept them?
Yes, we do.
I'll move to accept the Municipal Code Alliance and terminate the. And terminate Commonwealth Code. I'll second that.
Wait a second. The motion to. I don't know whether we're contracting with them or.
Yeah, I don't know if I, I, I know Barry Isaac does contract, I don't know, I'm assuming how big they are, they have a contract, so. I would have them send you.
Well, they, they.
Under review, I would make your approval contingent upon review of.
The contract.
The contract, I would, I would make that.
They indicated we'd have a face-to-face meeting too, to finalize some things.
And do we need a date on that one, we're switching or?
I would just say the first of the year.
Yeah, that gives you time to negotiate any terms that you wanna include.
So, include that in the motion.
Okay, been moved and seconded, all that stuff. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, aye, seven.
Thank you. Um, okay, data centers. I worked for other municipalities and in one municipality. They wanted to rush an ordinance through. Because they were concerned somebody was gonna force them to do a data center. And this is, this is a model ordinance from the York County Planning Commission. And I was quite alarmed when I saw all the requirements in this thing. So anyway, that municipality, the planning commission, we have an ordinance here that we went through based on this ordinance. And it's fifteen pages, a lot of requirements. So we just went over that last month, um, I guess it's in for the final approval. Uh, John Wilson came up with this, from CGA. So, anyway, I didn't know if this borough was interested in doing this, I. I, I hear, I hear it's, it's important to have all these requirements handy, rather than just let them come in and, and put up a big one.
We've, we've been waiting on the York County, uh, sample thing, we talked about it at, uh, LGAC.
Mm-hmm.
It's out now, right?
Yeah, this came out in August.
Yeah, so we're, uh, we've been reviewing a bunch of them at, uh.
LGAC.
LGAC.
And basically, the reason why all those different things are in there, because apparently. They're pretty much just a block building with no windows. They require tremendous amount of AC and water. Which really, we don't have in the borough.
But not all of them use as much water as some.
Yes, but the other thing is they're so noisy.
Well, and they need a lot of power.
No, we need electricity.
Yep.
Lot of electricity, so that's, that's what, why it's so many pages.
And I think we really do need to move ahead with it, even though. It's probably not gonna happen here, but we've got a ten-acre plot with J.I. Myers and as bad as the housing might be, who knows what they could put in there?
What's this data center do?
For, with the artificial intelligence movement, they need all of these.
It's just, it's just modems and computers.
Centers that whole data.
That whole data.
This is where these guys can start preventing, said we won't even allow it in the borough.
But they're popping up everywhere.
You can't prohibit a use in a municipality, you have to account for every use. So, that's why a lot of, you see a lot of like adult businesses in industrial zones, because you can't prohibit them, so you put them where you don't want them. Um, so that, so you can't straight up prohibit anything, or it's permitted everywhere.
But so it sounds like you can control the zoning to prevent certain things from showing up?
You could put it in certain, require it to be in a certain zone, so you could require it to be in an industrial zone, is that, does that require it to be in industrial?
It doesn't say, that's why we went over and I said, hey.
Well, it probably wouldn't in that, you would need to put that in your zoning ordinance where your permitted uses are, so you'd have to. You know, you have to amend your zoning as well.
And we, we decided to put it in the general commercials under a special exception requirement.
So that is in your zoning?
It will be.
And which municipality is that?
It's transferred.
In transfer.
So, do we need a motion to move forward to start looking at it or just start doing it?
No, they're just looking at it, you don't have to, you don't have to approve.
I have another question, Jeff, will you take that to the zoning board?
You mean to our planning commissions?
Well, yes, okay, planning commission.
Yeah, I can, I can.
So that we get started on it.
Okay. Yep, I can do that.
And your review is there?
So I have a question, um, actually for the, um, zoning officer. Um, someone had brought up at a previous meeting, maybe a consideration, um, similar to this for smoke shops. Is that something we could also explore? I just wanna bring this up again, as it's another concern.
Yeah, that was something Tom, Tom Fawn brought up. I didn't research that.
It would probably, yeah, it might. Fall into a commercial use. However your commercial uses are defined, it's probably in retail, a retail store.
And that would have to be right in the center of town.
So wherever your retail.
Town center, yeah, which is like the first block off the, off the square. In all four directions.
Yeah, I don't know. If you can differentiate it from other retail, I mean, perhaps if you just define it as a smoke or bake shop. And define it specifically, but is there somewhere else you can allow that use, you have somewhere else that it's reasonable to allow that use?
I don't know about reasonable. Cause I, like, any industrial place, it's all land law. That's why really we change.
I mean, you could just put it in your industrial zone and say that's where it's permitted. I, you could face a challenge to say, well.
There's no.
You really can't put it there, yeah. I mean, that's essentially doing the same thing as prohibiting it.
Yeah.
I say do that.
What?
I say do that then.
She said it might be challenged, it might be a challenge.
Then let them challenge it.
What, Jeff, you can look into it?
I can, I can look into it, but I think you hit it great on the head there because your, when you say when you got the smoke shop in, I couldn't stop it because it was retail sales.
I mean, even if you, I'm just trying to think this through, even if you defined it and put it in industrial, so you say, well, smoke shop's only allowed in industrial. Could they challenge it because you're. Why are you treating all other retail one way and that retail a different way? Yeah, and then, and then if they challenge it and they're successful, then they could put it.
Where they want it.
Wherever they want. That's the, that's the challenge with these businesses, is that you're so, you're limited, you really are limited on what you can do. Because you can't prohibit uses.
Could you require it to have a zoning hearing?
You could make it, you could. You could make it permitted only by special exception. And then they'd have to prove whatever criteria you come up with, and if they can prove that criteria. Then they're permitted to do it, then the zoning hearing would have to grant you special exception, so. I, my recommendation would be to look around and see if there's places that have done this, maybe there's someone that has come up with criteria that makes sense. Because it can't be outrageous, I mean, you can't say you need to have five acres of land to have a smoke, you know, there has to be a reason.
No, and you know, they're growing up all over the place.
I know.
I mean, just, ju- just when you see an empty building, all of a sudden it turns into a smoke shop.
Two just popped up in Hanover in the last five days.
The places probably could.
Until they get robbed and.
Or zoning.
I know.
County Planning Commission, YCP two.
I don't recall.
I have against. If we could prohibit it, I might, you know, I would say prohibit it, those and the data centers, but.
You might be able to say you can put it in your school.
We've been trying for the last four years with dealing with this.
I'm guessing they have to. Or whatever, then.
Well, they've got it up here at the.
Exactly, but then the gas station happens too.
And the gas station happens, yeah.
But they would be kind of grandfathered in if you start something new with any new cigarette licenses, maybe.
If it's something that would be regulated by the state, that there's not that you can't. You can't do it at the borough. So if the state regulates like nicotine or has a license process, then.
That's the problem with the smoke shops.
I would look around and see if you can like.
The smoke shops.
Find any.
So that is marijuana. The kids are, the kids are, and then go to school.
I understand.
Because the, where the smoke shops are.
Okey dokey.
Uh. My report, yes, uh, permit applications, received one, issued one, year-to-date seventeen issued. Rental registrations, there's, there's no change there. Uh, complaints and violations consist of grass, right-of-way vegetation and trash violations. And I did take care of the site distance problem down on the corner of Burns Road and New York Street. So they are in compliance now.
Jeff, on, um. The issuance of nine twenty-five twenty-five on our back. The time, it is about the Horst Town Bank replacing the ATM, have they done that yet?
I doubt it, cause I just did that just a couple days ago.
That's what I was wondering.
Did they even pick the permit up? No, they didn't pick the permit up.
But that's what they're going to do.
Yes, yeah, they're gonna replace the ATM right there at the corner.
They have to change the structure of the building at all?
Not that I would know.
Okay.
I found one, Aine Township has one. And they restrict how many can be within each, like, a certain distance from each other. Um, how far from a residential use, parking requirements, hour requirements.
You said it's Aine?
Kane, C.A.I.N. So it's on, oh, I'm sorry, C.A.L.N. But they're also regulating, um, marijuana businesses, hookahs, lounges, so. The dispensaries, yeah, so. Um, I don't know if recreational marijuana will be passed in Pennsylvania, but it is the common trend in other states, so. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be a bad idea to consider these anyway, so.
And at the borough conference, we just heard that, uh, the idea is, uh, like alcohol, a lot of times we. And at the borough conference, we just heard that, uh, the idea is, uh, like alcohol, a lot of times we have alcohol, signs up no alcohol here or there. They said we need to include.
Marijuana.
Marijuana, well, not just drugs or something, something. So, and I looked at our park and it is alcohol and drugs that's prohibited back there, so we would be covered.
That has stopped everyone.
That has stopped everybody from, from doing it up your own.
But, but by, by doing it and saying that we don't permit alcohol. This was more for like people who rent buildings out for weddings or whatever. The borough could be liable if somebody has a car accident after, after the event.
And I'm not sure, I think the fire hall is starting to allow alcohol of some sort, aren't they?
It's on trial.
So you need to bring that up.
Because you'd be liable, so would the borough.
Yeah.
From what they said.
I'm not exactly sure.
It's a one-year probation, and this is the first time they're allowed.
Yeah.
And yours, soon enough.
Yeah, where, where we dance, they have a, they have a, you have to, if you're gonna rent the place, you have to have a million dollar liability.
Nobody renting can, you have it. It's just, nobody renting can have it. It's just the fire company, voluntary can have it.
Okay.
There's nobody renting.
I'm sorry, um.
That's, that's covered under your liability. When might be more about pointing down?
For what, like, for the fire company?
Yeah.
No, if they're not selling it, they don't need anything if they're, they're allowed to have just alcohol there, yes.
Yeah.
It's one of those, they'll try to sell it, that's what they need.
Yeah, um, Frank, I was just gonna say, um, maybe check with the VFW and see like what their regulations are. Because I'm sure they, I mean, VFWs have alcohol, so I'm sure they've also like done their due diligence on the liability and adopting things like that.
I don't know, they, does, you know, the VFW needs a, a license?
They have their, yeah, they have their own liquor license, like, taking those liquor club licenses. But as far as how they sell it, like, to the public for like use, I don't know how they do that.
Well, they have, they have their own window for the bar.
Right.
Like, ring road view.
Right, so then.
Yeah.
Yeah, what the bar is doing is a BYOP, so that would be, they're not selling it.
Yeah, they, that's what they do with the.
And the B doesn't stand for bottle, it stands for beer.
Beer, yeah.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have anything else for the solicitor engineer or does I know?
I just would, wanted to know about the survey and subdivision property. What is that all about? Remember the engineers, the number one, like, you say, and the engineer?
We were asked last month, what would it cost to do a survey of all the properties, how they've acquired the bank, to just to have property boundary survey and plans done.
Okay, I was just concerned that was Church Street because that butts up against the church property.
Yeah, there were, it was, no, it was just, it was just the actual physical properties, not alleyways or anything like that.
And, and.
Well, West Church Street, it says, we're, West Church Street here, so that's a street.
Yeah, no, it's, sorry, that's, I, I, I think that's incorrect. Is that, is that the one?
It's, it's, it's grass, it's not.
Oh, yeah, it, West Church and.
Okay.
Spruce.
Okay, those are, yeah, those are right of ways.
They're, they're right of ways and whether the, the, uh, borough would take them over and turn them into streets or not.
Cause they're borough property now, so what do you mean about taking them over?
Turning them into a street.
They're on, they're on open, they're on open alleys.
Okay, it just butts up against church property, so that's why I was wondering what it's all about.
So it would be, so if you think about it, there between, just north of parking lot, where that square is down there, that would be a road that would go down there, we would take it over. And we'd connect the end, it's all, it turn at the bottom and that spruce street there behind all those houses. But still, a lot of those houses down there actually have, uh, garages and things that they need to get out of. And so if it was a street, then we would be able to plow it easier during the winter and have that open.
Then what would you do about the drain if you put a street?
That would be the engineer. Uh, what, I'm not sure whether it was you that said something, uh, about it. They talked about the idea of that maybe needed to go over to the edge and down along somehow, I don't know. Or whether it can just stay underneath in the middle of the road or not, I don't know.
Yeah, we, it would all depend, we'd have to go through, I, when it actually becomes a project to see what.
How deep it is and everything.
Without having any knowledge, I couldn't speak to that.
Yeah.
I just was wondering if that would impact the church property.
Understood.
The only thing it would, should affect the church property is you wouldn't have all those riprap down in there with stuff growing up through. Okay, well, thank you folks, if you would leave. Uh, secretary.
Good, back to the data, data center. That, can you get a copy of that, of your proposed ordinance? And Devin, can you send it to Andy Harrow of Kador's?
We don't have a proposed ordinance.
No, but if, if you're, if you're, if you have one that, you just wanna see a draft of something that's been put together based on the model ordinance?
Yeah, because I brought this up to Kador's and actually the front page of Lancaster Farmer, um, under crop of data centers growing in the world. There are already ninety-seven data centers in Pennsylvania. There's over six hundred in Virginia. Uh, Kador's township received a right to move request from the Civic I P. And I'm wondering if Jefferson received one. It is a company that is researching the area and, um, soliciting information on township purchases. And the other concern is, um, Governor Shapiro, even though you're writing these ordinances uh, to help with energy developers, he is proposing a, what's called a lightning plan. It's House Bill five oh two, which will allow the developers to bypass any local zoning. So it was a concern and I know PSAD is working on trying to stop this with Shapiro. And I just think Jefferson may be involved because you're sitting on one out here. And that all went through your planning where his, um, his plan is to bypass all local zoning and allow a developer to move forward.
Well, my guess is your best bet there would be to contact your local senator and.
And I think you as a borough, maybe put something out to even your residents.
I, I think that is a, is something that the Borough Association did talk about at our meeting.
Yeah, and it just, even at your residents, because this isn't a political Republican, Democrat. And this is taking over your township's ability to stop. I mean, you've got developers, real estate, developers, energy, and we're talking even small nuclear. Now the thing is many nuclear plants to, um, uh, power small business. And it's all coming this way.
Cash flow.
And I gotta say, you guys, no, to, to the board and to your attendees, you have been given more respect from this board than I have ever seen from Kador's Township. You are fortunate to be able to stand there and say what you have done tonight. Consider yourself lucky.
Thank you. Okay, cash flow report is before you. There's a second.
I'll second it.
When second. Any questions? All those in favor, cash flow report as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, ayes have it. Next, we have the budget. In our two meetings, we were able to go through all the income and our expenses. We were able to, uh, move some funds from the general account so that we have, uh, balanced the budgets. And, uh, for the residents, is this the fourteenth year that we have not had to raise taxes for the borough? So just to let you know what's happening there. I think it's the fourteenth, it might be the fifteenth, I don't remember. Uh, I would have to go back and watch. All, what we need is a motion to advertise the budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ann, second by Frank, that we advertise the budget. Needs to be passed finally before the end of the year, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, ayes have it.
When would we have a, an open, a time for the public to come and?
Uh, usually the way it's advertised, I believe, is that the copies will be here, they can come and, and look at it here, right? That's what we've done in the past.
But then don't we do, um, a six o'clock meeting or something?
On the budget.
So the people then just come.
Yeah.
Can it be put on the website as a proposed budget? That it's stated that it's proposed, rather than making people come up here?
Yes, I can do that.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah. And then just, uh, just put it over, 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 you know, like, what I was saying, say drafts or proposed or something like that. And then we.
Yeah, I can do that.
Uh, somebody can't take it some future point and say, oh, look what you did and you changed it or something like that. Okay. Did we vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, the, uh, we've been thinking since we had the three officers that, that passed, that we, uh, make a donation to the fallen officers fund.
That's the official, um, fund that the.
They only, they only made one official fund because there were so many, uh,
Scams.
Spam people out there trying to get money.
You're, you're referring to the York County Safety Coalition funded?
Yes.
And I talked with, uh, one of the people that runs that, one at the York County Borough Association, and addressed things with him, and he said, yes, that the money would go there. And because it's for the safety fund, then it would be used for things for the officers who need it to, for safety.
It wouldn't actually be going to the families.
No, it's not gonna go into the families, it's used for, for your family.
That's how, that's contributions to that in general go. But, uh, my son's a northern York County Regional Police, uh, police officer. And that, if you designate that part of it in that coalition, it'll go to that family.
Do that.
It can go to the family.
Was this fund in place before, was it newly established?
I believe it was.
The Safety Coalition is in place, but then you can, within there, you can set up individual fund drives for various things. And this one just started for this purpose.
Well, I think that we should make a donation. So the, the question is, um.
How much?
How much? So we'll throw that out to people and see what you think.
That's what I was thinking.
The lower high.
I, right, I was thinking around with that, a thousand is what came to my mind for, right off the bat, but.
I'd be more inclined if you have it filled less, but if you guys decide that.
Five hundred was fine too.
Yeah, I think five hundred.
Five hundred would be a, a better, considering that it's taxpayers.
Yeah, yeah, we're giving taxpayers money.
So, we need a motion and a second.
I'll maybe give five hundred dollars to.
When second.
And should we identify that in the fund, or do you want it to go to the general fund?
Do you want it to go to the safety or to the families?
Are you asking about, there's a flyer up there.
For what?
For the safety donation thing.
Okay, yeah, I was asking him if you can donate individually or like how it works.
Yeah, that gives you options to pick what you wanna donate to.
And it's very easy, I might want to just make the.
It's very simple.
It's very easy. And the place for identifying the money is, is a separate little block on there.
Now Frank says he'd like it to go to the families. Would you like it to go to the families? Okay, the move that, that we identified as going.
I just have one question. We always talk about the three that passed. But there are two other officers who were injured. They too would have needs. Could we say the, the, uh, those who passed and.
Four injured?
Four, and, so that they, they all could tap into that if they need to. That's my thing.
That's what, if I may interject, uh, our local social club made a contribution and did just that. Made it to the three fallen firemen and the two injured firemen associated with the North Doris.
They're gonna have time off, their families are, are locally running hither and yon.
Well, the one fellow's in rehab. So is that okay, Frank?
Yep.
Wes? So did we add that in there? All righty, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Ayes have it. And the last thing under secretary's report there, uh, October fourteenth through the twenty-fourth, Connie will be out of the office and the office will be closed. There will be a sign on the door that says if somebody has an emergency, get in touch with me. If somebody gets in touch with you, please, uh, either if you can deal with things, that's fine, or get in touch with me. Okay? The next meeting is sewer authority is the fifth of November. Down to committees, um, the end of October sometime, they will be pruning the four U trees on the square. And my question to the council is, the four pear trees on the square are starting to get long and leggy. If we get a real heavy wet snow, limbs are gonna break because those are fragile trees in that they don't support much weight on the limbs. I'm asking the council if I can have somebody possibly prune those so that they're not so sticking out.
They're even coming out over the road.
But that, um, there's the four on the square and there's two, one either side of York Street coming into the square.
And then Bradford pear.
Yes, they are.
The ones they tell me are not.
Yeah.
Cause they smell so good.
They're lovely.
They are.
I, I'm not sure, did they go on the.
Yep.
The list for noxious. The list for noxious plants or something like that?
They are on the list. Yes, they are, yeah.
Maybe we oughta think about trimming them.
We're gonna call it, we're gonna call it the square.
Yeah.
I think people would tolerate.
Yes, they would. The last time they replaced those yew trees, there was an awful lot of complaining.
I know all about that.
I think let's try pruning.
Let's try pruning them.
And if that doesn't work, and if they start breaking, then we can...
Yeah, I'm sure it's good, not gonna cost that much, I don't know if we need a motion for it, just a, just as a maintenance thing to, to try to clear things up there.
A lot of paperwork and log effects from LA stuff.
Well, I think though, that we should hire somebody other than Mike to do that.
Oh, definitely, definitely. Uh, Mike is not doing the yews either, the big, common thing.
But I also, while we're on the square, working with the Doughboy thing, our benches need a bit. They've gotta get painted or be replaced or something, but they, I think you should ask Mike to really, really take some time on those, cause they're down to bare wood.
Well, he had said before, wanting to put PVC over them.
PVC over them? No, use, putting PVC instead of the wood.
Or, yeah.
Yeah. I'm like, that...
Cause that would be maintenance free and it wouldn't...
Yeah.
That's not what it's cracked up to be, I can tell you that.
Yeah, it had to, it had to be solid, it couldn't be the hollow stuff.
I saw a guy put a deck up and shh, shh, shh.
Well, I think either paint them so that they look good, or we have to bite the bullet and replace them. As much as I really love those benches, and I know that they've been there a long time. I don't think people see whatever it is that you put on there, I, I don't think that would do it. The ends would have to be closed, or you'd have bees in them, and I think...
No, no, you couldn't, you'd have to use solid, couldn't be just hollow PVC because it wouldn't work tapering the ends to go in for the pin on the end to hold them in place. It would have to be solid, and so if it was solid, it wouldn't be going like that.
I don't know when they were, may have been painted last, but I know back when we did the square back in ninety-one, they were all painted.
Mike has been...
Freshly painted at that.
Mike has been painted.
Has he?
Painting two every spring.
Gotcha.
The two on hand are repeated really bad now. And, uh, but as far as repairing them, when Zach Toman was the maintenance guy, all the boards were replaced.
I was gonna say, Bill Sennett did a couple of them back in the square restoration.
Yeah, and, no, Zach Toman, when he was maintenance guy, and in fact, it might have been, in fact, I think it was when Jimmy was sitting on that one bench, and the guy came up and he just got out of the way, and he hit the bench and broke the bench.
Yeah.
We had, we had Tom Baum make a mold up because it broke one of the ends.
Sure.
And he made the mold up so that we could actually make a new end, and we got all new boards then for all four benches. I don't know how long that's been. Mike's been here for three or four years already.
Yeah, it's probably ten or fifteen years.
Probably fifteen.
Oh, please.
Trying to think, I think I knew that kid that did that, it was, uh, someday my brother went to school with.
Oh, hit the, hit the...
And that's what I'm trying to think, I'm thinking probably not quite fifteen years, but...
Yeah. Probably about right. Probably about right. Cause, cause, uh, Tom Baum actually had to taper the ends of the boards so that they would go into the concrete so we could drive the pin in the end to hold them in place, so... So, anyway. And financially?
No, I wanna talk about the Doughboy.
Oh, okay, that's right, Doughboy.
First of all, they came and they waxed it.
And it looks really nice.
He looks nice and shiny, he's really great, and they did the little plaques on the side, and that, and then that, that other plaque that, uh, has the dates of when everything happened, he did that, and, um, we were lucky, he caught it, but I do remember how they were chasing it.
Yeah.
And he was up there on the pedestal and it got nipped, but he's an outdoor kinda guy, so it was alright.
I will tell you, the, the Square Restoration Committee, those of us that still live, uh, have been talking about it, they appreciate the fact that you finally took the chance, that, that had the courage to go do it, and then, uh, that you'll even consider doing annually, like he said.
Well, we are considering, and that's my next thing, the annual thing, I got a price on it for, to have them come out. It would be eighteen hundred dollars to have them do it annually.
That's a lot of money, I get that, but you know, it's, it's, if we want this, the monument to be there, we gotta tend it, we gotta care for him, especially since that World War I statue is the only one left in York County. I think it's, it's, it can be a landmark, it helps us identify who we are, and, um, I know it's a lot of money, but, um, there, there were still a couple bucks left of that fund, so you can take it a couple years yet before you'd be physically out of that fund.
Well, and I, I have an idea of a way that we can fund it.
Good, good.
So, but I'm not gonna say it out loud, cause I have no idea for the word.
Yeah.
But I have an idea, and, uh...
Well, the, uh, the, the actual cost to have him do the work that he did was thirty-two.
Yeah, I imagine so.
So it's eighteen, that'd be eighteen thousand a year.
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred.
Sure.
Yeah, eighteen hundred.
But, 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 but when you take about how many thousands it was back in ninety-one, and we've done nothing to it, three thousand I think is, was a cheap getaway.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty much...
Well, then they took, and he said they actually took it away.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was going for six months, the last time.
So it was very interesting watching him, he brushed the wax on, he had a, like a paintbrush, and he brushed in all the little nooks and crannies, and he climbed all around the thing, he was working on a ladder up on there. And then they heated it, he heated it to make the...
To dry off any moisture that the wax had been getting on.
So it really adhered to the thing, but it was very interesting, I watched the whole time, I thought it was really great.
Well, I think it's good that you're thinking of funding it, but I think it needs to be a budgeted item, it needs to be done a year.
Yeah.
Without fail, but it's gonna deteriorate.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's just something, it's a necessary, it's a, maybe a necessary evil, but again, it helps designate Jefferson who we are, it's sort of gonna celebrate a hundred anniversary of it being there, and it's, and the fact that it's only one left anymore, I think that's important, and I think that's an important heritage.
It's very impressive to me because when the cannon died, was here for the Cespedes Centennial, he looked at it, and, and he said, you know, all of those pieces come off, they come apart. So he's not just a molded thing, he, he's got all things, and if we only knew what happened to his little, whatever that was, I don't know, I never saw it, so I don't know what it is, but he had a knife or a...
Saber.
Saber or something like that. So anyway, uh...
It'd be nice if we knew what happened to the eagle for the plaque on the west side.
Yeah. Um, I, I'm gonna move that we venture forth, uh, they will honor the price of eighteen hundred dollars for five years.
Wow.
So that's not, that means every year of the eighteen hundred.
Yeah.
So...
But they're locking it in for five years, that's great.
Yes, and actually, uh, while the guy was there, he told us that one of their workers who do, does the same thing he does, grew up in Spring Grove, and he lives in Dover. So it might be easier to get somebody here to do it.
Yep, there he is, good.
On an annual basis, so...
And he said it didn't really matter whether it was done in the fall or done in the spring.
Good, good.
So we're just glad, and here are pictures of it if anybody didn't see.
So since you haven't approved the budget, can I be put in there for next year?
I asked the same thing, yes. So we can put this... It's not my number.
No, but we already got our meetings, so we haven't had...
Well, if we make a motion, yeah.
The Doughboy's got it.
Yeah, we should be able to, motion to put it into the budget.
But we already got it.
That's true, we already have an artifact fund, so...
So it's, it would be taken out of that.
We should, it would be taken out of that.
As long as we know that there's some profit gonna do, so I will make a motion that we do it for five years. Eighteen hundred dollars.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, however, are we allowed to do that?
Well, you can audit your mentions, okay, can't you?
No, no, no.
Yeah, that's...
It doesn't need to be on the budget, what I'm saying is, we have a motion and a second to spend money, and we didn't have the, we were gonna spend money, we just have an i, a line item that says the Doughboy.
Uh, Doughboy Maintenance, I have Doughboy Maintenance Annual.
Oh, okay, so it's there, alright, so we're good. Been moved and seconded that we spend the eighteen hundred dollars out of the Square Restoration Fund to maintain the Doughboy for at least the next five years. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose no, ayes have it.
Will they get you on an automatic schedule or will this do call down every year?
I, I'm not sure, I'll call and see.
My guess is, once we call and tell them that we'd like to do it, they'll put this on the scheduling. That's normally the way business works. Okay, Ann?
Oh, okay, well, we've been busy, one of the things that's not on the agenda, but we did it, so I'll just tell you, it's not gonna cost any money, we took a tour, um, of some of the water projects in York County and Lancaster County. It was a bus tour that they had municipal officials take. It was very interesting, I hope that they're going to do others, and I hope maybe some of our members can go. But, you know, we, we hear about these projects, and they told exactly how it got done, meaning like, the one that was the simplest project wasn't so simple because it required working on private property. And that one took eight or nine years to get the permitting and the grants. When people say, oh, yes, you can get a grant, yes, you can, but you have to keep bidding on it and hoping they pick you up. And one of the things I mentioned is like down at the factory, at the old factory, Tom Baum, in that stream, there's, what do I call it, cement or blocks or something?
Concrete.
In that, and we would like to, we wanted to remove that, but it was such a...
And actually do some other work there fixing it up.
Yeah, so that the stream would flow better, and, um, it was such a small thing, we couldn't get them to give us any money for it. It was big to us.
Sure.
Because it was big, it was gonna cost them money, but, so you have to just keep trying and trying to get, it takes years. And we've sort of, with Tom's passing, we just sort of let that go, cause we weren't sure, but one of the things they said is dangerous is allowing grass to grow down to the stream, which of course, that's what we have, our people mow their grass down to the stream that's there, and they said that's very bad for the water, and I asked why, and, uh, the only answer I got was that people blow the grass into the water, and also if you, they fertilize the yard, that goes into the water, so I think that we can address that with our few houses that are along the stream, just to make sure they don't blow grass into the water, because it's, we want them to mow it. It looks very nice, the way they have it mowed all, all along there, but we don't wanna put bad things in the water. So that was an interesting day, and we wound up eating at the John Wright, a restaurant, which...
It was free lunch?
Yeah, talk about a water project, that was a great rock, water project.
But the, the idea of the projects were to reduce sediment going into the bay.
And apparently they've really done that a lot with the projects.
With the big project over in Lancaster that we saw, they had three of the six phases done. When all six phases are done, it'll, would've cost them about ten million dollars, but annually, they figured it would be about four million pounds of soil would be captured and not be allowed to go down into the bay.
So that's what they've been working on, and I will say it was a little tricky, and I have to, I think we have to follow up on why.
She's got your treat.
We were in York, and they, what they're doing there, and the mayor was real big in this, and he's one of the leaders about all that. And he was saying about how, you know, we have to look for the people upstream and yada, 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 and he said, and I noticed that there were some people from Jefferson here, where are they? So what that meant, I don't know, but we are upstream, so maybe we just couldn't like mow our grass and not put it in the water, but, uh, we didn't have a chance, he left before we got to ask the question. But that was a very interesting thing, I also went to the County Boroughs Association, which was the night before this tour, and we ate at the John Wright. So two days in a row, I got to see the beautiful water. We had two presentations, one was, they had some cadaver dogs there, so we, we got to hear about the work that they do, and it was very interesting. But then the other thing is something that, um, really, when I hear the, of things we have to do or be careful about, I get worried that we're gonna get sued for something. Well, the presentation was a man from the York County Fire Police Police Association. And after his presentation, I was really worried. So I, I presented all of the council members with the paper, the man would like to come and speak to anyone who would have him. And I said, well, then I think that if we had him, I didn't wanna have it just for the council, I wanted to have it for the firemen too, because some of the things I learned from his presentation that made me really worried, in, impacts the fire police, who we've always said, go for it, and all the firemen, take care of that, they have them there, they've gotten trained and all that stuff. But apparently we have more responsibility in that than we need. So that's what that paper's about, and everybody read it, and we should probably get that guy in here to talk to all of us. And then we went to the Boroughs Association, we haven't been home very much. Wonderful presentations, many that caused worry to me. The first one was the, the keynote speaker, he was very interesting and not at all scary because it's Alex Weber, who I don't know anything about, um, uh, the American Ninja Warrior show, I don't watch it, but he's the host of the American Ninja Warrior. And he talked about how he thought he couldn't do things because of all the sad feelings that he had as a person growing up, and he focused on his... and he focused on his inadequacies. And through working with the American Ninja Warrior, which he actually was a winner on after a while, it took him a while. Uh, he, he went from the first year, he was just supposed to do it, and of course, he couldn't do it, and he fell in the water and all that stuff. So, he failed at every show. And then the NBC said, well, now we want you to be able to do it. You have two weeks. So, that was, it was really an interesting presentation. Uh, we did hear a, a very interesting thing about the legal aspects of code enforcement, and that was excellent. The one that really touched my heart, not in a bad way, it was entitled Police Interaction With People In Crisis. And he started out with the shooting here, talking about those people. And then he talked about all the different crises and what happens with the police. And then he ended again with our shooting. And so, it was, um, really an excellent presentation. I learned a whole lot. And then the last one.
Was frightening.
Yes. We need a lot of insurance, according to this guy. He, um, he is the chief risk officer of Duncan Financial Group, which is under Keystone Insurance. We have Keystone Insurance. And he talked about all the ways, they, he called them blind spots. And he talked about all the ways we could sue and we had, be sued, and how we need all this insurance. And one of the things was alcohol. If you allow people to have alcohol.
So, in other words, if we didn't have the sign out there that says no alcohol.
We could do, we could do, if we let people go drink there. And I was thinking, oh, we have that real nice casino, and people are gonna want to be there. So, anyway, we worried about it, but it was an excellent presentation. And I have to say, I always get a lot out of those. This was just the weekend, but the presentations were outstanding, and we learned a lot. And they did say they sent this and Courtney passed them out. The, the new consolidated statutes for the borough code, which is what we have to go under. So, we have, we have all this about that tonight.
When?
Um, I don't have any, no. I'm gonna go check the lights again after the evening, it's gonna be dark.
Are yours all working?
Our lights are working.
Yeah, good, good.
And if anybody sees anything that's not working properly, let us know, including residents. If you see a, a light that doesn't appear to be working right.
Well, yeah, 'cause if they blink, sometimes when I'm going by, I'll drive up and down the roads a couple times trying to catch them. Even, I'll see one go out, and they'll be like, which one was it? And then have to wait, so. Sometimes it's hard to catch them in there, if you just happen to time it wrong.
Yeah, yeah. Okey dokey. Uh, Frank?
Okay. Jefferson Borough, we had, uh, Kurt brought this up to me, they had thirty total calls in the borough for September. Three hundred forty-seven calls for the year for the, for the fire company.
Was that all Jefferson or?
No, that's.
That's all.
All. And then last month, it was eight calls, all medical assistance, September. And that sixty-eight, so, was in the, in the borough for the year so far, so that's an increase of thirty-seven from other years of calls in the borough. And then on Sa- uh, let me get ready, I'm too far ahead of myself here. October, they're having Cash Bingo, and then you can come dressed up and get a free game, and and they're gonna try at one time of allowing alcohol, so that's, that's still in the oven.
I just got my tickets tonight, Frank.
Did you?
Yeah.
You gonna dress up?
Probably.
The doors open at, uh, that'll be on October twenty-fifth, when Trick or Treat is out at the park. Doors open at three, and they start playing bingo at five-thirty, so. And the kitchen will be open for, so.
I'll have dinner.
Dutch Suppers are the first and the eighth in November, and I think the tickets are going real good according to our, so.
Good.
They're not, that's all I.
Hope we have full tables. Hope we have full tables.
I think the last one, that's only one.
Seven o'clock, there's a lot left. Two o'clock on that eighth, there's a lot left.
You gotta do it before.
They're selling t-shirts too. How about t-shirt for the suppers?
Yeah, there's, it'll be their seventy-fifth year for having the Dutch Suppers. And they're gonna have t-shirts and cats, and they're gonna have a program printed up. Different things in it and people.
Tea towels. We're just gonna sell tea towels.
They're gonna sell tea towels, and they also have a vintage quilt that's seventy-five years old that was never washed or used, so. Ran into a lady that her mother, her grandma made it for her when she was.
Fifteen?
Seventeen or something.
Yeah.
And she's up in Hennover at the, she's at the Lutheran home, yeah. And she wanted us to have that for the Dutch Supper.
Good.
And the wife, and we didn't wanna take it, but she insisted we take it.
Okay. Uh, do you know anything we would, Ann would have for the sewer authority? Nothing?
No, nothing.
In solid waste, we, we renewed the Penn Waste Contract last month, so we're good there. Any old business, any additional things for the Fall Conference? Ann covered it pretty well.
It was really good. I wish others of us would attend those things. Sometimes they're better than others, but they're always good. And this one was, hmm, very good.
Yeah, we walked around and talked to, they have vendors there that defray the cost a little bit. And the one vendor there, they do asphalt repair, pothole, and they guarantee the pothole will be fixed for like five years. And.
I said, doesn't it pop out? You know, nope.
Not if you have enough, not if you put enough juice in it. You know, it's just like, Penn Dot could keep, keep popping out if they just put asphalt around the edges before they put the asphalt in, put tar around it. So, anyway.
I got one thing on your old business. Can we revisit the speed limit in the town?
Okay.
Jason would like that one. Jason would like that one.
Well, I think we are gonna have to go. That one, we could've put twenty-five in, and I think we should do that.
Which one?
Well, we were allowed to put on Hennover and York.
That might help with like, you know, the issues.
Cause I was down there the other night, and look, nobody's coming, I start going, and boom, I turn, or had a car hit me. You come in from Sinson. And if you're down there any time when they're letting out down a mercury or something, and when they're heading there, they're going the same way. So, I think if we are, they allowed us to go to twenty-five, we should put twenty-five up that way.
Okay, now, here's my question. They don't slow down for thirty-five.
Well, maybe they'll go thirty instead of forty.
Well, Spring Grove has twenty-five, and I think everybody seems observed that pretty good when you go through.
Well, yeah, and even too, if they are speeding, if they're doing thirty-five, that's still slower than, like she said, they're going forty-five.
Can I, can I say though, um, Spring Grove has police that enforce the speed limits. So, I think that is a big part of it too. I mean, they sit at least once a week when I'm passing through, as they got just sitting there.
That's why I go slow through Spring Grove.
I don't understand why we can't have twenty-five both ways. I mean, it's, it's the same road that goes through Spring Grove.
Uh, the state, when they did their traffic study.
Yeah, I know, they did, but I don't understand.
Wouldn't make it less than thirty-five north and south, but we could go to twenty-five east west.
Did you, did you turn at all?
Well, why?
The question is, it, it seems, I, I hear that, and I, I understand Penn Dot works in strange way, I get that. But it's, it hurt points, the same road go to the Spring Grove, and now you can reduce it to twenty-five. What do you think the difference is?
But you can't have it the same speed everywhere because the conditions of the road are different. Our two, uh, hill, now, I'm surprised that Spring Grove can have it at twenty-five, I am. And maybe they just put it up, but it's the pitch of our road, but that's the problem, the two hills. That's why we could do it this way.
Of what?
York and Hennover can't.
Yeah, that's, I'd like to know their logic behind that, 'cause it seems odd.
Because of the braking. It's.
Now, that's the, that's the engine brakes.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That's the retard, yeah.
Well, I'm thinking if we put thirty, twenty-five that way, and then get in touch, and it's working real good, I think you gotta let us put it the other way.
Yeah.
Well, we did talk with Penn Dot this weekend. That's one of the things with these conferences, you can actually talk to people. And we talked about the fact that we don't have a circle, we have an ellipse, and truckers don't know that 'cause the road's not marked appropriate and whatnot. And so, they are going to be contacting us.
Gonna call, call me back this week sometime.
Ask them to speak to you.
Because they, they draw the, the lines around the, the ellipse as if it's a circle, instead of as, if it's an ellipse. So, if they put on lines as if it's an ellipse, the truckers will swing out further because of the ellipse, and they won't keep their cab just on the white line, which is like a circle, and hopefully, the trailers won't hit the, hit the square.
And they said that Penn Dot is responsible for the signs on their road.
Yeah, I've heard that.
Alright, I said to them, well, we wanted to put an oval, one of those white plastic things that they adhere to the roads. You see it at like turns in some places. I wanted a big oval and the word slow, or, you know, when it's coming up the hill and when it's going down the hill. Well, he said, well, maybe we could. I'll look into it. I couldn't believe it. So, maybe we'll have more cooperation.
But, they're responsible for the, the speed limit signs initially to put them up. But if we wanna change them, or we have, or they have to be replaced, then the borough has to find that. Again, a lot, just like stormwater. If you go out in the, out in the township, they got a stormwater problem underneath the road, they'll come and they'll fix it. In the borough, stormwater under the road, if there's a problem, it's the boroughs. And that's the legislature up there that, that won't fix it, fix that situation and say Penn Dot's responsible for underground water in the borough.
And it doesn't matter how big your borough is, you're responsible.
Does the Borough Association play any of that kind of thing?
Absolutely. Every year.
Changes maybe, yeah.
And I said something to Kate Plunk, and she said, what are you talking about? Like she didn't know it.
Well, why should she?
Because it's, it's addressed every year.
Oh, I see what you mean. Yes, that's true.
Every session. She's been addressed since she's been a member. Anyway. New business. We have. Is that what this resolution is? We have a resolution that we've been asked to promote. It is about Kindness Week. And Kindness Week is November eighth through the fifteenth. And if you would like to proclaim kindness week, November eighth through the fifteenth, we have a proclamation.
We could put it on the website. I think we should have, I think we need some kindness in this world.
Yeah, all the surrounding municipalities are, are turning in on it.
So, I move that we proclaim November eighth through the fifteenth of twenty-twenty-five Kindness Week in Jefferson Borough. That would be Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash oh-four.
There it is. And all this.
Our host is back.
It's agreeing with you.
I'll second that.
Ann moved that, uh, we, uh, pass Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash oh-four about kindness week. Seconded by when? All in your favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, pose nay, my tab.
And it says here that during this time, individuals, families, schools, businesses, faith-based and service organizations, and all community constituents would be involved. So, could we like send this to our three churches? So that they know.
Yeah.
Be a part of it. And the service organizations would be lions.
Lions Club.
And the firemen.
Well, I'll take, I'll take it to the Lions Club next Thursday, this Thursday, I guess.
So that people know. I just got that deep by this week.
I didn't hear what you were saying at all.
I'm sorry, Frank. Take it to the firemen so they know that Kindness Week is.
Oh, kindness, okay. I'd bring it back in for a tree there.
You're too far ahead.
Yeah, you're, you're ahead of the game here. Yeah, I guess the next thing would be the free tree, right?
Well, it has to now, I guess. It wasn't in my order.
You had, yeah, you had the, uh.
I had the borough.
Boroughs Association.
And they're even planting for you.
Yep.
Yeah.
Tell me about the trees.
Alrighty. The, uh, York County Liberty Tree Planting Update, April eleventh. Recognition of the, these anniversaries, particularly the upcoming two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary of the United States. York County is gifting all seventy-two municipalities with a tree donated and planted by Rotary Clubs in York County. York County staff have been reaching out to municipalities over the past year to discuss planting locations and dates. The previously scheduled date in October twenty-twenty-five has been rescheduled to April eleventh, twenty-twenty-six, rain date April twelfth, twenty-twenty-six. Municipalities are asked to designate a spot for a drought-resistant tree, either a plane tree or swamp white oak, determined based on availability. In April twenty-twenty-six, the Rotary Clubs of York will plant the trees in the municipalities at the designated location. Municipalities are asked to dig a hole prior to April eleventh for an approximate five-gallon-sized tree base, and maintain watering and care for the tree after planting. These plants may grow to a significant size, so it is recommended not to plant them directly beside a building or structure. If you previously provided a planting location for the tree or decline to have planting, we have that on record. If you have not. If you have not yet confirmed your pre-location, please contact in a website.
It's only one tree.
One tree. But where would we plant it?
He's gonna take the one tree.
We'll take the...
We'll take that one.
Will we take the one tree?
Sure.
Where will we plant it?
Put it in the playground, the park.
Well, we'd like to, but we don't have a design on the playground yet. But we should be getting them so that we have a tree.
I think that's a good place for it.
Yeah.
The place that I can, the only place that I could see it really going would be sort of between the gazebo and the road.
Towards the parking lot?
No, toward the, the road.
Oh, the road that way.
Yeah. And the reason I say that is 'cause down here we have the sewage, the sewer pipes. It wouldn't be good to put them down there.
You guys decide. We want, I think we should have the tree.
Yeah, I, I think we've, we've sort of decided we, we'd like to have it, but, uh...
I'm wondering about, um, the species of tree. I, I missed that. There were, there were a few there, but if they have acorns or something, the kids will probably throw them at each other.
No, no, it's, it's, it's a plane tree or a...
A swamp white oak.
Swamp white oak. I have no idea what a swamp white oak is.
It's one you plant in the wetlands, a swamp white oak. I planted some, haven't it didn't come up. And, and the oaks are getting a disease right now. They got it called root rust and the oak trees are gone.
Oh, yeah?
Yes.
So hopefully they give us a plane tree.
Yeah, I don't think we have a choice because it says it's based on availability.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So hopefully, one of us has the first in line.
Maybe the oak trees won't be available if what Frank says.
It's not an oak tree, it's a plane tree. Or a white, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but a pin oak gets got it too. It's called root rust, yeah, it gets the, they plug up the oak it.
Right.
Can you do anything for it?
No.
That'll mess up the lumber industry, won't it?
Yeah, yeah, they, they, they come from Asia.
Why would you say it like that? Asia.
Isn't that where we got the lantern fly from?
Yeah, global, 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 global.
I think you got the, got the, uh, what's the one that I just killed the other day? It was on, or today on that basket.
Stink bugs.
Stink bugs, yeah. They came from over there too.
Yeah.
And they brought starlings in to kill something off and now they're eating everything and basically our, the, uh, farm population is going down 'cause the starlings eat everything.
Okay.
All right. Do we need to have a vote on that?
No.
No? Okay, that's good. The, uh, correspondence, we have correspondence from the York County...
Public comments.
Huh?
Public comments, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I'm with, I wanted to do correspondence first because it has this, uh, the York County Borough's Association meeting, which is the Saturday meeting, is, it's a social and dinner. It's the awards meeting that they have and that is on November twenty-second, Saturday.
Heritage Hill.
It's gonna be at Heritage Hill, so.
Chairman Derek Reed, who lots of us have heard of, he's very good. He's a singer, says, "And Elvis impersonate," I don't know about that, but he's a very good singer.
Is he the one from Littlestown?
He grew up in Littlestown.
Yeah. So he, he impersonates a lot of the, the crooners.
Self-chicken parry, some sage.
Yeah, but hopefully we can brush that off.
Dave and I will both go.
Yeah, we'll both go.
But we should all go. It's always a nice event.
Yeah, they have it later once this time.
Well, it is later. They have trouble with scheduling it because of Veterans Day. Who's to schedule their Veterans Day?
That's the first day of deer hunting.
What, the twenty-second?
I don't know, I can tell you, Frank.
Well, you don't go deer hunting anyway. You let the other people come on your form to hunt. Family, right? You don't actually do it yourself.
Oh, yeah.
Anyway. Public comment.
I just got one real, real quick thing. I didn't know if it would come up during the meeting or not. Saturday I had the opportunity to be with a couple of firemen and there was conversation amongst them and frustration about a project that they're working on. Frank, maybe he knows about it. They're, they're working on getting air conditioning or looking at proposals for their conditioner. And they're saying that they have a, one of our representatives is ready and waiting for paperwork that the Borough needs to complete for which they can get a grant for it. And the firemen were frustrated about this. Now, I'm not bringing this up for, to have any kind of conversation, but just to tell you what their inference is, that the Borough is dragging their...
We've been asked to do that. We have not been asked to do that.
Okay, so there's a communication part.
Yeah, we have. I've been talking to Dan, what you called about it.
Oh, okay.
These hasn't been getting back to me.
Oh, you know about it, okay.
You, you've been talking to Anthony about it?
Yeah.
But Anthony has nothing to do with it. If, if the fire company needs to do it and they need us to do something, they need to contact us.
Well, he knows about it, that it's money available. He heard about it, that one other place did it, but I don't know how we're gonna go about it. He's gonna have to get the ball rolling, Anthony.
Well, supposedly this Congress, our state representative with...
Kristen, what is that?
Yeah, she's ready, she's been, she's helped with this before, according to these firemen, and she's ready and willing to get ours as soon as they get this documentation from the Borough, whatever's required. Again, I don't know anything about it. I just didn't, I wanted you to know the inference in case.
Well, it's good that you brought it to us 'cause we, we don't know about it.
Yeah, I brought it up during the meeting and I said about it and then somebody said, "Oh, that might affect our grants." So, and then I just dropped the ball about it. It's that simple.
Yeah, but I don't, if, if they're waiting for a certain document...
I don't know what they're waiting for.
Well, I, I've had no...
It sounds like the, the fire company in Phillips Hill are gonna, are actually gonna put the proposal together.
No, that would, it's, it's documentation.
They're gonna go through the Borough and press together.
That's, that was prevented, supposedly presented to the Borough and it requires Borough documentation for the application process, but that's all I know.
But that's what I'm saying, we're not doing the application.
The inference was that you were. That's the inference. But again, why don't I just tell these firemen to get ahold of company maybe and you can start that whole?
Right, there's the information. I gave it to...
Oh, there you go. If, if Anthony has it, maybe just contact Anthony, see what he knows about.
Oh, I'll reach out to him.
Yeah, say something to him about local share account category for, for facility program. Berks, Cumberland, Westmoreland and York County. Local share accounts statewide.
The representative seemed to tell these firemen that they, she's helped them get, other fire departments get this very same thing, so.
Yeah, but she also might not know what all we have out there as well.
I don't know, I don't know, again.
I don't, I don't unders, I don't, I wouldn't think that it would affect anything because it's different.
Only had one fireman talk to me about it.
Yeah, it was three of them. They were in at the huddle up at the, on, on Saturday morning and wanting to know, they can't understand why we can't get... The, the question about something in the building came up and they asked, it said they had this opportunity for, for air conditioning and, uh...
Was it the president?
It's good you told us.
What's that?
It's good you told us.
Yeah, I'm not sure who the president is. I, I don't. But it was, uh, the fire chief was part of it and two others, I don't even know who they were.
They need to reach out.
All right, well, I'll tell, I'll tell Troy to get ahold of you and see what's...
Yeah, I've been working on with Anthony and he, he said, "I know what you're talking about." He told me and he never got back to me.
I haven't turned.
I said, "Get with me" and he never come back to me.
We'll work on that.
Cause Kelly's the one giving this information.
Ah, I don't know, I don't know that one.
Well, Troy was up at my house tonight. I don't know why he didn't say something to me about it.
It was, I just happened to say hi to him up at Fire Hall and a bunch of them were sitting there talking. And, and I thought this, as I was listening to her, I thought, "This is odd that the Borough wouldn't be following through with it if it's, if it's an opportunity for them to get fire or air conditioning."
He said it has to go through the Borough somehow, if they get it. And Spring it's, I think, used to buy a fire truck. They got like, how much out of it? They're, they're a million dollars through it.
It would have to be, uh, get a part.
It's, it's there where nobody, you know, that they use it, they don't, not aware of it.
Yeah.
And he said he knew that and he, he never got back to me. I told him the other day, give me a shot.
Well, if, if we have to actually submit the grant, that's one thing. But if all we have to do is supply information, that's a different thing.
I don't know, I don't know.
I don't know what about it and all I know is...
And ma- maybe we submit it to Kristen Bell herself rather than...
I don't know.
Then he gotta fly somewhere else and then she sees it's there and then, I think, guess we're on the right.
I think, it sounds like the grant needs to be turned in and then she'll nudge it along.
Yeah.
And that's usually the way that works.
We gotta know how much we really want for the air conditioner, you know, I think we're talking about probably sixty-five thousand at least, you know? 'Cause she was out when they had, when was it? When they had the sheriff's breakfast up there and that's been over a year or more. And she said, "It's money there, you need air conditioning. I'll see what I can do to get it."
Yeah, there you are. That's kinda help you need.
See, about the other month I gave it to him and I thought he'd come back with a report out of doing it or something and he did.
Maybe forgot about it.
I don't know.
Well, again, that was, that was my only involvement, just to hear him and I thought, "Well, I'm coming here and it, it, I, I figured if the Borough Council knew about it and there's an opportunity for the fire department to get money, you'd be on it and it just didn't die."
Okay.
All right.
Any others?
Does anybody have anything else? We could go to the order.
I moved to adjourn.
Moved to adjourn, second?
I'll separate.
Second, when? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Who wants to stay forever?